Okay, you join me in the pleasure allegiance, please?
To the five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we start tonight's meeting, I'd like to talk about our process. The meeting is being conducted in person as well as by phone and Zoom. This allows planning commission members and or members of the public to participate in person or remotely. We will conduct a roll call to determine who is present. Throughout the meeting, we will call on individual planning commissioners to make sure that everyone has had a chance to be heard. We will conduct a similar process for comments from the public. Please wait until you are called on to offer comment and or testimony. If you'd like to speak, please submit a request in the chat function and wait to be recognized. If you're here in person and want to speak, there's some forms out there you need to fill out and give to Anna or Katie. We'd like to thank everyone for their process, their understanding and patience in this process. Minutes and audio recording will be available on the planning commission website. Call the meeting to order. I call this meeting of the Cook County Planning Commission to order. Today's date is October eighth, twenty twenty-five, and the time is February one. People joining me are your Cook County planning commissioners. We are volunteers that have been appointed by the Board of County Commissioners and make up the diverse cross-section of the community. Planning Commission will consider the following agenda items. Public hearing file number two-one-seven-two-five-zero-zero-zero-one-five-one PLNG. And number two, public hearing for file number two-one-seven-two-four-zero-zero-zero-two-five-zero PLNG. Next is a roll call for the planning commissioners.
Yes.
Kurt Jovanini?
Here.
Hunter Newhart?
Here.
George Pott?
Here.
Laura Deal?
Present.
Laquita Stack?
Here.
Wes Williamson, was Wes gonna, no, he was not.
No.
And Michael Warren's here, Marty Kirk's here. For commissioners who are absent, will staff please indicate for the record which applications are excused or unexcused.
All absences are excused.
Is there anyone in the meeting room or participating remotely that wishes to address an item that is not on the agenda? If attending remotely, please enter a question. Request to speak into the chat function. Hey, hearing and seeing none, you'll now mute the phone lines for those who are not staff or commissioners and move on to the first agenda item. Public hearing one, we will now move to the first item on the agenda. Public hearing for record number two-one-seven-two-five-zero-zero-zero-one-five-one PLNG. Request for a conditional use approval to operate a childcare and or nursery school facility in the exclusive farm use EFU three zone. The proposed facility will be located on the same parcel as the Palbeut Community Center. It would be licensed for a maximum of seventy-five individuals, children and staff. The specific property involved is map tax lot fifteen fourteen thirty-five, tax lot four hundred. Applicable criteria, the hearing is being held pursuant to Cook County Code eighteen-one-seventy-two administrative provisions. The planning commission will be evaluating the request against the following applicable criteria. Cook County Code Title seventeen, Chapter thirty-six and Title eighteen, Chapter sixteen, one-twenty-six, one-twenty-eight, one-sixty, and one-eighty. Your county comprehensive plan, Oregon administrative rules, and Oregon revised statutes. Exparte, contact, conflict of interest, or bias. Do any of the commission members have a conflict of interest or bias to disclose? Kurt?
Well, I met with Mr. Kilpatrick before on a job about a month ago or so, looking at a septic that we dug up. So I just wanted to bring that to the, I know it's not going to impede my decision of anything, but want to cover basis on that.
Okay, he's on the other one, but that's.
Oh, well, there you go. I'm just trying to figure out which one we were dealing, we're doing with the school.
Yeah, they're both in Palbeut, the ones, anybody else?
No.
Nope.
Nope. Okay. Has any member of the commission had any ex parte contact with the applicant or any member of the public regarding this matter? Commissioners should disclose if they've had a site visit and state on their record any observations and impressions from the site. So we haven't had a site visit, so any ex parte contact with any of the applicants on this matter?
No.
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 Nope.
Okay, all known. Are there any members of the public or in person, in person or participating remotely who wish to challenge any member of the commission? If participating online, please enter in the request to speak using the chat person. Chat feature. No one there, Anna? Do we have anybody from the public?
We, uh, the applicant for the next.
Okay. Okay, so hearing and seeing none, we will move on. Before opening for testimony either in person or for those participating remotely, I want to remind everyone that all testimony must be directed to the applicable approval criteria and standards. No person may testify without first receiving recognition from the hearing authority in stating their full name and address. No person may present irrelevant, immaterial, or unduly repetitious testimony or evidence. Please do not repeat testimony. The commission may set time limits on all testimony. Does any member of the commission wish to impose a time limit on testimony? Okay, just for clarification, even though we didn't set time limits, if we feel we are starting to get into a lengthy discussion, we may do it at that times. Failure to re-raise any issue accompanied by statements or evidence with enough detail to give the hearing authorities and the parties an opportunity to respond. The issue precludes appeal to the land use board of appeals on that issue. Failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with detailed specificity to allow the hearing authority to respond to the issue precludes the applicant from seeking actions for damages in Circuit Court. At the conclusion of the hearing pursuant to Cook County Code eighteen-one-seventy-two zero-eight-one, the planning commission may consider any request to continue the hearing or leave the written record open. We will start the hearing with staff presentation. After that, testimony from any federal, state, or local agencies will be allowed. We will then offer an opportunity for the applicant to speak. Individuals in support of the proposal will be heard, and those who are neutral to the proposal. Next, individuals that oppose the proposal will be heard. The applicant then offer rebuttal. Then I proceed with staff's presentation.
Good afternoon, commissioners, and our third, Katie McDonald, Cook County Senior Planner. This afternoon, we're going to be here, you're going to be carrying a conditional use proposal for a childcare facility. How good? Next. So the request, the applicant is seeking conditional use approval for a childcare facility on property that is owned exclusive farm use, CFU three. The request is the childcare facility request is not in our Cook County Code, Chapter eighteen-sixteen. It was part of House Bill thirty, thirty-one oh nine from twenty twenty-one that added this specific request to the Oregon revised statutes. So if you remember the work session we had a month or so ago, that is one of the items to update our code to align with the state statutes. Even though the request is not listed in the table, it is still under, still listed as a conditional use under the ORS two-fifteen-two-eighty-three. So that is, um, I don't know why it's missing, anyway. So that's where the use is coming from with criteria. And as a note, the agent applicant on the application, the agent representative, Monique Van De Akley is not the applicant agent that is here tonight. Nicole Lee has requested a change to the agent and has provided the county with an authorization form from the Palbeut Community Center. So although the materials that you're seeing tonight has Monique's name on it, those will be changed for the final decision to represent Ms. Lee's representation for the project. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. So our applicable criteria, I alluded to it before, is the Oregon revised statute is where the criteria is outlined as a conditional use and allowed on resource ground, which is our exclusive farm use. Cook County Code chapter, so it's going to apply to this, it's going to be Chapter eighteen-sixteen, eighteen-one-sixty, and eighteen-one-eighty. So those are exclusive farm use, our conditional use, and the transportation impact analysis. The Oregon administrative rules that apply directly to this is as it is a conditional use. In January one of twenty twenty-five, they implemented a prescriptive measure for a farm impacts, right? So that was part of that Farm Forest Rule Advisory Committee. DLCD and the Rules Advisory Committee proposed changes, those changes then into LCDC, and those are adopted. Then we also have the Cook County Comprehensive Plan, the next. So these are the Oregon administrative rules that are, we're going to look at for the farm impacts test, so for the fit test. For those of planning commissioners that have been through the conditional use process before, this is the eighteen-sixteen oh-two-oh and the beginning of eighteen-one-sixty, which is, is there a significant change in accepted farm practices? Is there a significant increase to the cost of farming, right? Those are our two farm impacts. The way to get to that information is what DLCD has provided, A through F in very prescriptive terms, right? So in order to it to deliberate and make a decision, if there is a significant impact or change, then these things need to be addressed. Those of commissioners that were here for the agritourism on Houston is going to be very familiar with a lot of the same language. Go ahead, go next. There's an aerial provided by the applicant, you can see the, the properties surrounding this site is a mix of active farm ground, non-farm recent, uh, non-farm ground, and residential R-ten zoning. So it really is a mix of zoning right there. Go ahead, go next. Actually, go back, sorry, just kidding. So back to the fit test, the farm impacts test. The applicant provided a exhibit one, which is a more detailed analysis of their farm impacts. They also included a table which identified the surrounding properties, listed if there was existing farm use, identified several impacts, traffic noise, lighting, trespass, weeds, pests, and water usage for some. The exhibit one with a survey to neighboring active farming operation, yes.
Question, the structure to, uh, to the north of the daycare center, is that the fire station?
To the south.
It's what?
The south is the fire station, the north is the community center.
I, okay, go ahead, I'll ask my, list my questions later. The daycare center, well, since I've already interrupted. Um, the daycare center, I understood, was to be in the community, Palbeut Community Center?
On the same property.
Oh, on the same property, not in the center.
Correct, it would be a separate structure.
I'm seeing to the north is the actual community center.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So the impacts that are that are identified for the first that eighteen-sixteen oh-two-oh will force, will or will not force a significant change, will or will not force a significant increase to the cost of accepted farming practices. Applicants issued a survey, spoke with neighboring property owners, spoke with neighboring farmers. I'm sure they will testify to their efforts. The planning commission will need to look at the material on the record, the testimony that you received tonight, and make a finding determin- determination on, is there a significant, is there evidence in the material to support the decision and what that does, and what that would be? For the comprehensive plan, the planning commission will need to make a finding that the childcare facility is or isn't consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan again is in one of the original documents, limited update. There are staff identified two agricultural policies that support. And the planning commission's task then is to, based on the material in the record and the comprehensive plan, if, to determine if it is or isn't consistent with those goals and policies. You guys could too. There we go. Um, another criteria that we're, that the planning commission will need to make a determination on is if the proposed use will alter the character of the surrounding area in a manner which substantially limits impair or prevents the use of surrounding properties from permitted uses listed in the underlying zoning district. Again, the zoning district for this particular property is exclusive farm use, rural residential, both of which farm use is allowed outright use, residential has single-family dwellings. For the most part, most other things are going to be subject to standards, conditionally, conditionally allowed. So next is the planning commission will need to find if the use is compatible with the allowable uses in the area. Again, it comes back to that. What is the impact? If there is an impact, what would that be on allowable uses, which again is semi-limited? Taking into account the size, design, location, and operation characteristics, the proposal will have minimal adverse impact on the livability value and appropriate development of the budding properties in the surrounding area compared to the impact of the development that is permitted outright. So operational characteristics play into this and what those operational characteristics are in comparison to the other uses that are allowed. Also, livability, value, and appropriate development. Those are not defined quantifiably in our code, anywhere in the comprehensive plan or in the Cook County Code. Where those come into play is through the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. The Cook County Code, as we allow uses and conditionally and subject to standards. So the planning commission has will be looking at the material in the record and in the standard form. Is there a thorough analysis provided to meet that standard? I'm done next, oh, go back one. Uh, Laquita?
Yes.
Commissioner Stack, the picture here on the right is from the community center looking south at the fire station. So if that gives you some.
Makes it better, thank you.
The next picture is as well, so if you go to the next slide, little different perspective, but that's the same, uh, same viewpoint there. So the, the proposal is to go on just the side of the fire station.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The, another criteria in the conditional use is evidence in the record to identify assets of particular interest to the county. This is one that I know has been kicked around before through the planning commission, as there's not necessarily a list that is titled assets of particular interest to the county. So again, this is a an amalgam of the comprehensive plan, the Cook County Code, and the applicant's attachment to meeting those standards. And then the when we get to the operational characteristics, there is a clarification, if you could go back to the clarification. So the application, the burden of proof, traffic impact analysis, and the fit were all list similar but a little bit different operational characteristics for the application. And in particular is the traffic impact analysis. So Exhibit two is from our road superintendent and came in that as the traffic impact analysis is using the PM, the AM and PM peak hour trips at fifty-five students, the threshold is twenty-four, which puts it one below needing a full traffic impact analysis. The traffic impact analysis is really designed to identify the infrastructure and traffic impact or potential improvements needed for the, uh, infrastructure. The road superintendent, as a county, doesn't really, does not have a system development charge in place at this time without any specific improvements identified. There, we don't necessarily have a mechanism for addressing the infrastructure if there were to be one. One of the things the applicant could do is clarify capacity and operational characteristics to align with a certain criteria. If it go, if it is the traffic impact analysis at fifty-five students, it does not trigger the analysis, our road superintendent can hear that it does not trigger any of that. So if you go forward again, one more. So can a condition of approval to limit the children to less than fifty-five address the infrastructure impact? So that's something to keep in mind as you're going through and hearing testimony. I'm sure the applicants who are here tonight will be able to address that in more clarity. And that's about all I have. Are there any questions for me at this point?
The only question I have, when you started off with the authorized.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but you have that documentation, you said, okay. So, okay, I just want to make sure you guys had something for the file.
Yes, we do have it for the file. Yeah.
Any other?
Excellent question, though.
What's that?
That's an excellent question, Chair Warren, we've been dealing with that, so.
Okay, okay.
Seems to be coming up regularly.
Yeah. Okay, I, you guys have any questions for staff or you want to just listen to see what the applicant has to say?
I just asked. One question, how's the, like, if you have fifty-five children and ten to fifteen staff, I assume, you're, how does that only yield twenty-four trips?
That's a great question. So when you're doing a, when you're doing a traffic impact analysis, so the traffic impact analysis was done by Joe Besman, Transite Engineering, which, um, has, is one of the only traffic engineers in our area, has done a lot of work. And due to the fact that I've sat through many of these presentations, one, I am absolutely no expert. However, my understanding is that the manual that they utilize to determine that impact analysis provides that information. And.
They refer to Table one, but I don't see Table one in our packet here, I see Table two.
Right, so I'm going to look through the application until I find it, because I did have that flagged. So, page three of the traffic impact analysis, trip generation estimates were prepared for the daycare site using the standard data contained within the ITES trip generation manual, the eleventh edition. So they use a.
Hold on, what page you on?
Um, application, the application, page three of the traffic impact analysis. So it's page forty-nine of sixty-seven, if you're following along. Online, uh, of the application. So the traffic engineers use a a trip generation model so that they have a, have a guide to say this use of this many people or this much use yields this. And then continuing on to the next page, each of the surveyed sites within the ITE manual was located within the suburban area. So they, so your traffic engineer took that and with the lower population within the Palbeut community, the trip rates were prepared on a per-student basis to account for a littoral setting. And if that's where we get to the student size, the ITE code, the land use, the daily trips, all of that. And if you would like to have more information, we would have to have the traffic engineer provide that. Because that's, that's about as far as an extent, but I know that it comes out of the manual, there's a prescribed number, it falls under this, is how it does.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff?
Not yet.
Okay. Do we have any state agencies here? Did you know it, anybody online or anything? Okay, then we'll hear from the applicant.
Hi.
And just state your name and address for the record.
My name's Nicole Lee, and my address is one-five-one-one Northwest Eighteenth Street, Redmond, Oregon.
So just go ahead and give us a, some of the things that Katie had mentioned, is there things you want to elaborate on as far as?
So with the traffic impact, um, what we see is that I used to do daycare out in Palbeut, and a lot of people were already making that trip from Pringle or from Bend, going through that. So, or they live in Palbeut. So a lot of it is about twenty-five, I do think it's close to a good number because most of those people are already coming through, so it wouldn't be an impact on the traffic, because it's already there. I think that's really. I think the biggest thing. When we went out and met with some of the farmers, that was really the only thing that they brought up was the traffic out there. And I know that even after me explaining it, they were still a little concerned, but. I, I do believe that, uh, it's pretty accurate with having experience out there. And the clientele that did come in while I was out there. Um, the number also is fifty-five, uh, we kind of had some discrepancy with. Uh, the application and. I'm not sure how the bigger range got in there, mostly because we wanted to make sure that the building was. Going to be licensed, um, because we're kind of trying to figure out how we're going to put before and after school kids and. So it was just a discrepancy, but we will change that to fifty-five if we can and just keep it at that number. Um, there will not be more than fifty-five students in the building at one time. And most of them will be coming, I think a lot of them will be before an active school care. Is what we're hoping to provide.
So the discrepancy you're talking about is where it says sixty children in there?
Yeah.
And then, okay.
Yeah, and there's, I think there's another spot that sounds a little more than that, but it's like a range instead of the set number.
Yeah. The, the other thing too is staff, is that, is that accurate, ten to fifteen?
Yeah, I, I mean, it will start on the lower, it just depends. Just kind of how the program grows, what our need is in the community. So there is a ratio to children depending on the age. That we have to meet, uh, for the state, and so that will kind of vary and that's kind of why we gave it the ranges well. Because depending on if it's infants or if it's school age, the number will change. And we haven't been out there yet, um, you know, it's, I haven't done daycare out there seven, um, for seven years. So I think that every time you start an operation and depending on the facility, it depends on. Who you're going to get out there and what the need is in the community now, I do know that there's been a lot of. New communities out there and there's more kids, um, in those communities, so.
What, what are, this is Marlo, um, Marlo Bill, what are the hours of operation, it, there were some different figures there?
Yes, there are, so I currently, I run a daycare and I am open till nine PM. However, I do not think that Palbeut is really going to need, um, those hours. So again, I'm hoping, and because it's in Palbeut, I'm hoping that it'll just be from six AM to five PM. Um, but again, I think that. I have to be out there to kind of see, um, those are my ideal hours. And I think I will have hard times staffing the, the later hours. Um, right now I serve, uh, a lot of single parents and it's just as a passion of mine to help single women, and so I do stay, stay open later. And if that is a need, then I would love to do that, but, um, again, I'm not out there, so.
It's not, that's not unrealistic hours even to nine.
Yeah.
Right.
And there isn't anybody that offers those hours too, and so I just really want to serve the community on what their need is, um, for kids. I, I just want to be the need for the community and, and the clients, um, so I'm kind of a little bit open. Um, I'm excited for this facility, so I can do so much and benefit kids so much. So I'm just kind of going with whatever I find out once I get there, so, sorry that I'm so kind of. You know, there's kind of all over the numbers, but I don't know yet, so I haven't been out there, so.
I, I think that's understandable, but I think that as far as your approval, you're going to want to make sure you. You're putting down what you think it could be.
Okay.
Uh, you know, I mean, so you're not. Oh shit, I wish I would have went six o'clock or I wish I would, you know what I mean? So that's just something to, I think that's why we're asking, just so we're got an idea.
Okay. So would it be better for me to put nine o'clock if I have any intent, intention of patient to go till nine PM? Okay.
That, that's something for you to consider, we don't want to tell you what to do, but we want to tell you to make sure you think you got your bases covered.
Right, and that's kind of why I put that range, but I'm assuming that that, I, I would love for it to be approved for that in case it's a need. However, I'm assuming it's going to be till fixed to five.
Well, i- if you were to get approved till nine, we're not going to be standing out there making sure you're there till nine o'clock. The other question I had, I, and I, I'm sure this would all happen, this might be a question for staff, but. I know this is, uh, what, one point six acres of area. And we're talking about farm use, but then you've got your EFU setbacks, so I mean. Is that even something we really need to consider, I mean, once they. Would it really take up, take away a plot of farmland larger than one point six acres, I guess is what I'm asking.
That's a great question, Chair Warren, and one that, um. I would address, um, so the particular parcel that the community center is located on. Was approved as a non-farm parcel in nineteen eighty-nine, so that parcel is not active farm ground. That is a non-farm parcel and that was approved as a non-farm parcel with a conditional use. So our setbacks for. The proposed facility is thirty feet from.
Right, okay.
However, in the conditional use criteria eighteen one sixty, the planning commission. Has the ability to increase that setback if they feel that that would be beneficial. Right, so if it's adjacent to an intensive agricultural use, which is very common with our. And when we updated the code, we add that, we do have that in other areas too where there's an increased setback. That is something that you can look at under eighteen one sixty, so. However, the current parcel that it is on is non-farm.
And it would only be a thirty.
Correct, okay.
Katie, do you mind if I, so I'll just add on that I, I think that was the intent of the legislature when they. Put this in, they had a requirement that the facility be co-located with the community center or school for that purpose.
Okay. Well, that answered my question.
That made me have another question. Um, because the actual site is forty acres. And. Somewhere somebody said one point six acres is going to be specific for the facility. At least for the building and the parking and.
Yes.
Yes.
So, my name's Hunter, so, I'm gonna, it's more of a question based off farmers and probably what their concerns are. Is it going to be seasonal, is it going to be year-round operation, year-round? A lot of farmers are moving big, heavy equipment during summer, so their concerns are probably, what are your peak hours, you protect a lot of traffic? Just due to heavy equipment moving in during times.
Yeah, it is kind of, I mean, mornings are kind of, it's kind of spread out, people don't always all go to work at the same time. So it's worth in like probably a three-hour window and also in the evening for pickup as well from after school. I serve a lot of teachers, so they come at three and then, you know, throughout that time from three to five.
Alright.
So, um, I did speak with the farmers and we talked about, um, in my parent handbook, uh, making sure that that's included. That there's farm equipment, that we are going to be respectful, that, um, and also assured the farmers. If they had any problems to take license plates, so let me know and that it'll be a no tolerance policy if people are going to be. Not respectful of the farm equipment, um, and so I will heavily have, you know, a guideline of farm equipment. Um, and driving around them.
So you think peak hours would be at six to nine in the morning and then three to six in the afternoon? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, is there anything else? I, I know you kind of got into this, but generally when the applicant comes up, they say quite a bit, so that's why we're all looking at you like. We're not trying to put you on the spot, but we, we do want you to. Share whatever you want with us based off maybe what. Uh, Katie was going through or her, any of the things you think that we might have been thinking about or asking questions and, and if not. As other testimony goes through, you will have a chance to come up and rebuttal or speak again.
Yeah, I would like to just kind of do it like that as, answer as we go, I'm not, this is the person I've ever done this, I'm a daycare provider. So, um, I mean, I'm super passionate about the project and all that's in there, but. Uh, I would love to hear what they have to say and be able to just respond maybe to that.
No, absolutely.
And Matt, this is the architect, um.
Yeah, no, absolutely, Matt, if you want to.
To say.
Yeah, just state your name and address for the record.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Matt Meford, uh, address six one zero seven one Snowberry Place, Bend. Nine seven seven zero two. Um, thanks for hearing us, um, you know, the proposal, I know, uh, it's, um. Very unique for this area here, um, it doesn't seem to be a lot of, uh, daycare out here and I know that this actually is an underserved. Area, um, when we looked at the, uh, state, um, charts for underserved areas for, uh, daycare. This was one of the leading, uh, areas of one of the leading counties that, um, needs additional daycare. Uh, and you wouldn't think that you would have that out of, you know, in the Palbeut area. But, uh, with the additional, um, housing that's been going on out there, uh, and just the growth, um, it is definitely. A need, um, we've got people passing, you know, from Prideville, uh, into, uh, Bend, Redmond, et cetera. And vice versa, and this is a good, uh, midpoint, uh, to drop the children off at. Um, and to Commissioner Kurtz, actually to, uh, kind of elaborate on the, um, uh, the traffic impact study. There are what are called pass-by, uh, trips in there. And that's what got it down to that, that lower number, and, um, there's what, um, uh, my client, Nicole. Uh, Lee was saying is that people are already traveling these areas here, you know, these aren't new trips, they're already going to be going out, they're going to just be. Dropping off their children. With that, I'd like to say, um, uh, thank you to Katie McDonald, um, for all of her, uh, amazing help. Really thank you for everything, uh, we worked with Katie, I, I really since minute one on this. We, we came in, uh, even before our pre-application meeting, um, we were out here, um, addressing, um, you know, the, the. validity, if you can, doing something like this out here, so, uh, you know, we've gone to work very closely with the county and, um, and. The people here, uh, which I think, um, I think that we've done a great job in, in doing so. We additionally worked with a general contractor, um, who is, uh, from, uh, Palbeut, uh, Sean Newberry. And he's been a long time resident out here and he's the gentleman that we're hoping is going to build a facility if approved. So, uh, you know, not only are we, um, you know, uh, communicating, keeping everybody in the room on what's happening. And, um, in, in taking steps forward, um, you know, uh, lockstep with, um, the planning. Uh, commission, I'm sorry, the planning department, but also to the pre-application meetings, uh, we had the, uh, fire chief in there. We had, uh, septic in that, we had all of the pertinent, uh, people, uh, necessarily. Necessary for the development of this, uh, structure. When we started looking at, um. The, the, the building, uh, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at the building, but, um, you know, it's an L-shaped building. Um, one of the things that we wanted to do was kind of, um, kind of shelter the, the, the children. And the farms from each other, so what we did with the building is that we, we made it hell and we placed it east. So that none of the farm, uh, or none of the traffic, um, you know, would impact the children. Two, it, it kind of helps corral the children as well, um, it helps for, um, for noise as well. The footprint of the building is, uh. Seventy-seven hundred square feet, which is about the size of the, um, the adjacent fire station. So when it came to the massing of this, we also went out a, a half mile in every direction. And we looked at every single structure out there, houses, bars. E- e- every kind of structure and we looked at the heights, very fortunately, um, that information is available, uh, to us. And so we, we looked at this and we, we, just the height and the mass of the building, um, is right exactly in the center. Of the average height, uh, that we see, uh, within that half-mile radius. Um, so again, you know, right sizing the building, um, you know, and, um, making it, uh, the, the appearance of it. Um, you know, the, the slope of the roof, every nuance of the building, um, you know, it reflects the other. Architecture that we see here in Kirk County, Palbeut, so we, you know, we're really trying for that alignment, we don't want it to stick out like a sore thumb. When we got into, um, the impacts, obviously that's a big thing, um, you know, the, this, it's, it's. It goes two ways. The impact scale, you know, how are the farms going to affect the daycare, how's daycare going to affect the farms, got the farm impact report. And, you know, initially, you know, we really looked at the surrounding, um, areas and really what would impact the daycare. We, you know, even with the minimal, with the amount of spraying that happens out there, um, in the spring. The, uh, the harrowing, all of that, we don't see any impact and, and again, too. Where we've orientated the building, uh, is away from any of that, uh, any, uh, the farm use up there. When we looked at how we would impact the farms, which was equally as important, if not more important. Because we don't want to impact the people who've lived there for, you know, ten, twenty, thirty, you know, so many years. This is their livelihood, so, um. I gathered all the names of every person out there, uh, and worked, uh, with Nicole. And, um, we put together, uh, and I don't know if you guys have seen this, but we put together, uh, basically a three-page questionnaire. For them, and we went through every nuance of what, of how we might potentially impact. The, the farming and, uh, rancher community out there. Went a step further, we actually contacted the state and, um, asked them, uh, for, uh, their, their input. And so they actually helped influence this list. Um, again, and then as soon as it was done, I put it in front of Katie, just to have, you know, full transparency of what we were putting out there to the people. To make sure that it was comprehensive enough and that we weren't, um, overworking anything on that. Nicole, went out there and started just talking to people, we sent this thing out to, uh, as many people as we could. Some who were PR boxes, some people who lived out of, of the state. But I think that we covered, you know, our, uh, you know. The, 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 the feedback out there and really with all of the items on it, so I'm happy to. Send it around and too, I do have a copy or copy of the, um, uh, traffic study. That was done as well, if anybody was to see that, but, um, you know. Out of everything on here, I mean, water use, um, traffic septic, uh, dry wells, water usage. Exclusive water usage, litter trespass, lighting, all the lighting will be what's called dark sky compliant, so all the lights will face down. It will not have any light pollution into any, uh, other location out there, it will be all contained on our site. But, um, really the only thing that, um. We got. Was more concerns with just traffic. And, you know, again, kind of tying this back, we're, it's so little traffic out there that, um. We barely even qualified for needing to do this, the only reason we had to do it. But if I'm wrong, was just the distance on that collector road, I think it had to be five hundred feet and we were three hundred feet. Three hundred fifty feet to the fire station, and that's what triggered it, but as far as the volume out there. We were well below, we need that out there, but we went ahead and did it anyway because of that, um. We just short hundred fifty feet over to the fire station, um, but, you know, certainly. Uh, we're, we're here to listen to, um, any of the feedback, uh, but, you know, initially, um, you know, really. When we looked at the feedback from both ranchers, farmers, um, out there, um, it was, it was pretty positive. Um, the only thing that was really, um, they had concerns about, um, was traffic. And, uh, if there are any additional issues, we're certainly here to, um, hear them tonight and address each one, um, as they come up.
Okay. Any questions from that? Okay.
What was your last name, Sam?
M E F F already, like Medford, but just throwing this short after Mary.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Uh, so at this time, did you, you guys have any slurs? Um, and I'm sorry, excuse me, but is it Terry Wigan? Are you in favor, against neutral or against? Huh? Against, okay. Is there anyone online that, uh, wants to speak, speak in favor of the proposal?
Make sure that one chat.
Yeah, just put the request in the chat. Okay. And no one in the room to speak in favor, so we'll move to those that are neutral, so I've got. Craig Kilpatrick. Or are you, are you on this one? You know, ma- making sure that we have it in here on the right. Number, okay.
Good evening, folks, for the record, my name is Craig Kilpatrick, I live at one three seven nine O Northwest O'Neil Highway. Um, as you can see, I'm, uh, the agent for the, the next application, and I had not planned on speaking to this, uh, matter tonight, but. Having had a chance to review some of the materials, um, I'm really not, uh. Pro or con on this, but I do have some suggestions and concerns, uh, that might be dealt with, uh, through conditions of approval. So if I might just speak to those for a couple of minutes, and you can take it for what you think it's worth. Uh, you know, unconditional use permits, um. Comments like, I'm not sure, uh, don't really give you guys a lot of guidance. And so there's a couple of, of points that I think probably could be better clarified. Uh, just so you know, on the traffic issue, um, and the traffic experts can speak to this better than I can, but I've been doing this work now for twenty-five years. And I've done a few of these, been involved with a few of these. The thing that's difficult about traffic reports and traffic analysis is that, in essence, the guy goes out, he measures cars, he sees what's going on. And then he creates an average, and that average is not a five-day average, it's a seven-day average. So if you have things that are happening for five days during the week, and there's nothing happening on the weekend, it skews the average. And so that can be, you know, taken for, for what it's worth, and I'm not suggesting that, that there's a problem with the, the traffic counts. But one of the other things that I heard in the testimony this evening was. Things along the line of, well, this is how we want to begin the prod- the project. But that we, but we want to allow for growth and change. Well, if we're gonna allow for growth and change, then there needs to be some means of measuring what this traffic impact is actually going to be. And so I would suggest, as has been done on some other projects in the past, that. Uh, the commission consider a condition of approval that, uh, suggests some kind of reporting. After this project has been completed and it's up, and maybe yearly, a report on what the actual traffic is. Because what happens with these projects, and particularly ones that involve, uh, you know, kids and education and that kind of thing, is that they tend to grow over time. And I think that the impacts may increase over time. And that's something that the county has a responsibility to pay attention to and to have some form of measurement. That was one of my concerns and suggestions. The other thing that I wanted to point out, and I did not have a chance to look at the complete packet, so I may be speaking out of turn here. But on most of the applications that we work on, the setbacks are pretty important. Uh, when the county changed the code, uh, several years ago, they took what used to be a one-hundred-foot setback. For non-farm uses, structures, residences, from farm activities and reduced it to what is now significantly less. And I'm not seeing anything in the staff report that gives a specific idea about where these buildings are gonna be located. It looks like there's kind of a cursory diagram, uh, in the staff report. But I'm just asking the question is, are there more specifics in terms of where the building's actually gonna be located relative to the? To the boundary lines, and some indication of where those setback lines might be. Uh, set up so that you folks have a better means of making a positive decision on this. So that was, was, was a comment that I had. The, uh, the other thing that having, having to do with the setbacks, the growth is, uh, and this is simply a question for staff. Um, I'm wondering, uh, will there be a letter of remonstrance required on this application so that the farmers in the area are protected? From future lawsuits or actions that might be brought against them for doing what they are legally allowed to do. That's always a concern, uh, it's been a concern this county for a long time, sometimes. Folks have an opportunity to respond to that, sometimes things are approved by the county, where, uh, neighbors don't have an opportunity to do that, and it leads to, uh, significant problems. So I would just make that recommendation and hope that, uh, remonstrance will be one of the requirements, um. Let me just check my notes here real, real quick. I think the comments that I made here are all things that could be dealt with through conditions of approval. Uh, it would, might be, uh, a good idea to maybe tighten up this traffic issue. Is, do we really know what it is, I mean, we know children don't drive. But are we gonna have fifty-five parents that are gonna be driving individual kids, I think, is, is it gonna be, you know, what, how, what was the methodology for that? Uh, it's, I know it's a little difficult for the traffic engineers to, to, to predict. But still, twenty-four seems like a low number, given what we're talking about here, and the fact that we're gonna, not going to be having single trips, but we're gonna have double trips. People are gonna drop their kids off, they're gonna pick their kids up, they're coming, they're going, they're coming, they're going, they're doing that four times a day, effectively. And so these numbers to me just appear to be a little bit low. Uh, maybe that's something that can be, uh, dealt with, but I think it certainly should be addressed by the planning commission. So with that. That's my two cents.
Okay.
Does anybody have a question?
Does he have any questions for?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Al Stewart.
Hi, I'm Al Stewart, my address is one four one eight nine Southwest Umbarter Road. And, uh, my concern is if you leave the proposed daycare center and head north, and then you come to one twenty-six. And you're trying to go west, that's very difficult now. I think before the bottom line, before the daycare center goes in, they need to have a roundabout at the post office or something. So people can enter one twenty-six. And head west. That's basically all I got to say.
Okay, alright.
Dangerous the way it is, so it can be worse if more people are.
Gotcha.
Mike, was that slip neutral?
Yes. Is there anyone online that wants to speak and is neutral on the proposal, just put it in the chat and we'll. Okay. Terry, i- is it Terry?
Yes.
Okay.
Is this still neutral?
No, this is against. And just state your name and address for the record.
Oh, my name is Terry Dugan, I live on Weekend Road, one five three eighty-four Southwest Weekend. Uh, I think it, this is gonna impact me more than anybody else in the community. Uh, because Weekend goes down to Palpea Highway from where the, uh, proposed daycare is gonna be. And then everybody has to get on Palpea Highway if they're gonna go to Ben. Or they have to come back, they'll turn down Weekend Road and, and, so I'm gonna get at least. Two hundred cars a day more than I have right now. I get my dogs killed, my sheep killed, we almost get run over by cars all the time. And now somebody wants to put a daycare, so we have. A daycare up the street, and, and I asked, I, I like the lady that's doing it, she's very nice. I asked her where the people are gonna come from, she said Redmond or Prideville. Now, why in the heck do we need them in Palpea, why can't they have the, the, uh, daycare in Redmond or Prideville from where they, where they started from? And, uh. I wanted to say something about the traffic, you know, when they studied the traffic, they stood there and looked at the cars going by. But I've been there almost, well, over twenty-eight years, and in that time, there's been four people killed. Within a half, within, within, within a mile, and one within a half mile of where this is gonna be. One little girl was killed on Reef in Riggs Road, when somebody went through the stop sign and killed her. I was there, the first one there, I called it in. Down at the end of Riggs Road, uh, Reef Road, where it comes out to one twenty-six, where the old community center used to be. There's been three people killed there in the last twenty years. And this is where everybody's gonna have to enter and exit off the highway. And, uh, I, I, Kathy Eby is sitting in the back, she and I are friends for a long time. And I, the last time I came to the community, had come to the, uh, planning committee was, they wanted to put a store where the post office is. And so we enticed the planning committee to come down Friday afternoon at five o'clock and stand there and watch the people coming and going. At, at where one twenty-six hits Palpea Highway. And they said, no way does there need to be a store there, and if you go by there now, you can understand. If you go by there daily, so, if you're turning, trying to go to Pitt. From down Palpea Highway to, towards Redmond, sometimes it takes ten minutes to turn left. And there's people pull out there and they don't care, they just gotta go to work or they gotta go someplace else. And, uh. Uh, as far as getting a roundabout, you know that the traffic partner's not gonna put a roundabout, they want to reduce the speed limit. It, when it goes through Palpea, it's so fifty-five, then it goes down to forty and goes back to fifty-five again. And, uh, you know, and we have people. That use all the back roads because it's so congested in the morning at the school, that they can't hardly get down the highway. Now, I'd like to know if anybody here on the planning committee does go that route in the morning. And if you don't, I would suggest you get in the car on, in early in the morning, about seven o'clock, and drive out there and go down Riggs Road, Reef Road. To the, where the old community center is, and try to turn left and see if, if you're just not taking your life in your hands. And every one of those kids that you, they bring to the community, to that daycare, is gonna have to enter or exit off that highway, either one twenty-six or Palpea Highway. And, uh, the other question is, if this always goes through, how does a. A private person have a piece of property on, on a. On a public place, who's gonna pay the taxes on it? She gonna pay taxes on it, she gonna call it something else, and then she's not gonna pay taxes, you're gonna miss the ten thousand dollars? This is a six-room school, probably worth, you know, two and a half, three, three or four million dollars, so how much is that gonna cost? I mean, can you figure out how you're gonna have a private, private party on a piece of public land? And who's gonna pay for all that? You understand? That's. That's all I got to say, and, uh. I, I like the lady, she's, she always gives me a hug, you know, and, uh. But I don't think it's time that we, we can have a daycare in. It's okay to have a pet, let's, let's get the roads, and you know they're not gonna fix the roads, you're not gonna put the daycare in and say, oh, you need to fix the roads. Well, they already know they need to fix the roads, so it's, it's, you know, it's not the right way to do it, thank you.
Any questions for Terry? Okay. Gary?
My name's Gary Leikens, I live on one three one 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 Southwest Umbarter Road. Probably about an eight mile from where this proposed facility would go in. And I'm not here to. Issue on the school, I suppose they've done their due diligence, and maybe there's a need, maybe there isn't a need. But what I'm here for is a resident that lives there and pays a lot of tax money to Kirk County. Is traffic. When I come down, right for, well, just come in here tonight, I came down at the corner of Rife and Riggs, four-way stop sign. I looked to my left, here comes a car, I'm stopped. I'm thinking, well, I, I, you know, he's not up to the stop sign yet, he just blew right through. He was probably doing forty-five, fifty miles an hour, and Terry, Terry said, we see that all the time. Rife Road is an old country road, I don't know how long ago it was put in, many, many years ago. It has very small shoulder, it's really narrow, it has a water canal bridge on it that you can barely get two cars passed without hitting the mirrors. And that bridge is right where the school's gonna be, real close to the community center. So. I don't wanna be in this situation, well, let's just throw more traffic and more traffic, and when people get hurt, and people get killed, then I guess we're gonna have to deal with it. It. We don't wanna put gas on the fire. There needs to be something done, and I know that Kirk County can't put a roundabout in because it's Highway twenty-one twenty-six, and that belongs to ODOT. And ODOT's got issued, I think we all know that, but. I'll pull down there many times, many, many times, my favorite saying to my wife, if she's with me, is, we'll never get out. And we wait, and we wait, and we wait, and finally you'll get out. If I had my fifth wheel on, and I'm sitting down at the stop sign, I'm waiting to get out, it is nothing for me to wait ten to twelve minutes. And I've timed it, so I live it, I know what this is like. And now, we're gonna put more traffic on that road. I was a businessman for over forty years, I did many, many, many traffic counts, I know what they're all about. This traffic count that is proposed now, no, there's no way, twenty-four, nothing. No, 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 you got this many kids, when it's fully occupied and you have staff coming, there's, there's no way. There is absolutely no way that traffic count, they may have a guy to go by, but I can tell you, if you wanna sit there when this is fully staffed, if it gets passed and you go through. There would be way more than twenty-four. So all I'm looking at is, how are we gonna get out? To go places where we have to go, whether you've got a doctor's appointments, dentist appointment, whatever you have to do, we have to be able to access the highway. And that's the, the only reason I'm here to voice this, is because we can't do it now. And another thing, from about six fifteen in the morning till about eight forty-five, nine o'clock, and then again in the evening, from about. Three forty-five, three, three thirty till about five forty-five. If anybody doesn't have anything to do, and you all wanna go down there and sit there and, and try to get out. Either at the post office, where Palpea Highway comes into one twenty-six, or on Rife Road where it comes into one twenty-six, you will actually see what I'm talking about. It is a disaster, and. It's no one person's fault, Prideville's growing, Redmond's growing, Ben's growing. The roads don't grow, we have, I mean, we're, we're just shoving more people and more people at the roads. And we can't get out, we can't access the roads, and that's why I don't wanna see more people get hurt or more people get killed. And so something needs to be done so that we can have growth. I'm not anti-growth, but we gotta be able to, to access the roads in a safe manner. And. Lots of, I've got one other thing, lots of people will come in the, uh, not so much in the morning, a little bit, but in the evenings. Coming from Ben on Palpea Highway, they know when they get down to Palpea Highway one twenty-six, they're gonna be backed up properly, they're gonna be the forty or the fiftieth car in line waiting to get out. So what they'll do, they'll blow across Shemway on the bus, hit Rife Road, and they come down Rife Road about sixty-five to seventy miles an hour. And I'm always shocked why they've never done anything at the. And I'm always shocked why they've never done anything at the fire station to put a reduced speed limit there. I'm just shocked, but they don't. So now they're gonna be going right by the fire station, right by the community center, and right by the proposed school. So if nothing happens, and this gets approved, I would hope that there would be at least some school zone signs put in, flashing school zone signs, starting on before the community center and going to the other side of the fire station to where we can at least get traffic slowed down to twenty miles an hour at times in the morning and at times in the evening, like school districts currently do. That would be the bare minimum. And that's basically all I have to say. I'm just telling, I live it every day, so I know exactly what it's like.
Any questions for Gary? Okay, thanks, Gary. Is there anyone online who wants to speak in opposition to the proposal? Put it in the chat and we'll Okay, so what we'll do now then is if the applicant would like to come up and address any of the things that were said, you guys can, this is your time to do that.
So I just wanted to
Just your name again from the record.
Nicole. I wanted to address the, I know how Terry had said that these people are coming from Redmond or Bend or Primeville. They're already coming, they, a lot of people, and also at the Palbeet School, they're already gonna be making the trip. And a lot of people at the Palbeet School are gonna have littles that would be already on that road and probably bringing, it would just be one extra stop to take their littlest one to me. The other thing is that before and after school care, I'm hoping to have a van. And a lot of that will be just us going to pick up kids and then bring them back. So it wouldn't be as many as they, I think are a little bit exaggerating too. The two hundred cars and the I think that there's a lot of things that are, I don't think everybody's realizing that they'll be before and after school, we'll pick them up in one car and there'll be, you know, however many. There'll also be, I have kids that have families of five and families of three, so it won't be one per child, one parent per child. It's mostly larger families. I think I care for one right now out of sixteen kids that has just one child. So that's just kind of what I had with that whole number. I'll let Matt say the rest.
Matthew, my friend. I just wanted to go through a couple of things that, some of the concerns, I wanna start with setbacks. Yeah, and I don't know who the gentleman was up here addressing this, but he certainly has a very good point that those things were reduced down from like a hundred feet off of the roads down to twenty. If you do look at our site plan, we are at least sixty feet off of the, from the property line. So we've placed the building even further back. And in addition, what we are proposing is some native trees and landscaping up in the front to even further shield the building and soften the look of it. But, you know, we did not wanna go right up to the, right up to the highway with that. So we're actually very far back, and if you do look at our site plan that we provided, we're very far back on that, into the entrance to just not come right out of the school. We've done a very small access road that we're utilizing, that we've been putting in. And so it will definitely help regulate the vehicles going in and out of that location. Taxes, I think we all know, there's no way to avoid taxes on this. So, I mean, if we were able to, I think we'd all be, you know, working together. I mean, see who could get our taxes a little bit lower. We're leasing the land from the community center. And they're big proponents of it because they are not, not a lot of people use the community center right now. And they're, they need a little bit of money in the nation there, so this is definitely gonna help the community center. So, but yes, we will be leasing and paying our fair share on this. One of the other things, I think the gentleman's name, Gary, that was up here, I really like his idea of, you know, slowing down the traffic out there. As part of the conditional use, we could provide signs, you know, obviously work through the county with that, any speed bumps or anything like that. I think that all of us could agree that, you know, we're seeing people doing sixty-five down there. You know, I mean, not only is it bad for the roads, but it's dangerous. So, but if we could do something, you know, work with the county on ways to slow things down, regulate the speed out there, we could definitely sign up as far as the conditions of approval of that. Thank you.
Question, and this could be why the setback question I had and Greg had is, on the map, I think the figures are so small, we couldn't see it.
It could be, yeah. And I provided full-size, full-size set, but they were PDFs, but they were, you know, like thirty-six by twenty-four. I would be more than happy to send those to you guys directly if you wanna see them.
But you're saying it's sixty feet from the highway?
From the property line, and the property line, I believe that we are, we are fifteen feet even from where the road is. Because you've got the right-of-way, you've got the paved portion, then, you know, typically your property line is anywhere from five, ten, fifteen feet off of that. I believe that we're twelve off of where the paved portion is, and then we're another sixty feet behind that. So.
Okay, any other questions for the man?
Can you, this is Marlo Dill, can you elaborate a little bit about the lease?
I cannot, however, I think Nicole could probably elaborate on that, being that she's been working with the Palbeet Community Center. So.
So a structure like you have planned is very expensive to build. Who will be owning the structure?
The structure itself, I will own, I will not own the land. I will lease the land, and if I ever, if there's ever a time where I need to, well, I have to own it for ten years. But in our lease, I think, we haven't gotten exact numbers, I think our lease is twenty years right now. So if I ever were to sell, the only thing I could sell was the assets, the business itself.
The structure and the business.
Yeah, yeah, so.
That's a little bit of a risky venture, if your lease is twenty years to start, or is it ten years to start?
I think our lease is ten years, or twenty years to start, yeah. We do have conditions on this, the lease is broken by either party as well, so. But I would love to be there forever, honestly, so.
Good question. Just clarification, so I understand, what I thought I heard you saying is, you're gonna provide a service for people who will come from Redmond, but actually work in Primeville, and people that live in Primeville that work in either Redmond or Bend. And so you're dropping, whoops, sorry. So you're dropping off point. Is that what I've heard you saying, that you're not creating extra trips? Because people that are coming or going are already going there for the reason that they have a job?
Yes, yes. And then also, there will be a lot of people that are from the Palbeet area. I served a ton of people just in Palbeet themselves. When I moved to Redmond, I had several families follow me from Palbeet to Redmond, and they had to bring their child into Redmond, and some of them worked in Bend. So, yeah, there's gonna be, it's gonna service Palbeet, Primeville, right on that.
And also what you will do is go from this facility to the Palbeet School to pick up kids after school.
I'm hoping to provide that. Right now, the Palbeet School commutes their children all the way into Primeville, and then the people all from Palbeet have to go into Primeville to pick up their children. So I am hoping to help the people of Palbeet to not have to go into Primeville, and they can just pick up in Palbeet.
Thank you.
So, I have a, Monty Kurtz, I live in Palbeet, so I I do understand the site from the farmer and the locals and the traffic issues. And I understand the, you know, somebody coming from Primeville going to Redmond is gonna, is gonna have a hard time getting back on one-twenty-six to go to Redmond versus they were already on one-twenty-six. So that's gonna create some safety concerns on one side of things. People going the other way, you know, they're gonna make a right-hand turn, and they're gonna make a right-hand turn going back. So that one's not as big of an issue for me. The speed issue, it is a big issue, and it's not just that intersection there, but the intersection at Copley and Riggs. I see people blow that all the time. And the sheriff comes out, you know, once or twice a year and sits there, and then they, then they ignore it. And so, and it's been more with, with the traffic coming and going from, from the data centers and all the construction workers and people who are working in Primeville or working in other areas. Palbeet has had a massive impact and seen a huge, it's been a big negative side with all of the increased traffic, because it was never meant for that. Remember, the highway wasn't meant for that, none of the side roads. People get off the highway, they take the side road, they go down, you know, what's, I always forget the name of it, right there. Starts with an S.
Stillman.
Stillman. They go on Stillman, they rocket down Riggs, they get back on Palbeet Highway to avoid all of the school and everything. So to me, those are concerns, and I feel all the residents in Palbeet. Facility specifically, you know, looking at where the setback is, and roughly scaling this out, you might have room for twelve to fourteen cars pulling in there at any one given time. And they're gonna be on Rife. So I would be looking for some way to help, help that impact, because I think you're gonna have a problem there. Especially if you have, you know, high traffic points, you got even thirty people coming or twenty-five people, you, there's nowhere for those cars to go if they're dropping off in roughly the same period of time. So that's something to consider on that, on that layout, and how that flow is gonna happen. Because I see about twelve to fourteen, and I don't think that's gonna suffice on the short.
We have a roundabout that goes around, but also
Yeah, so I kinda sketched it out on there, and I mean, out to the road, you've got room for twelve or fourteen cars. Unless people pull in, get out, park their car, and there's not that many parking spots. So that, that's just something that I'm, you know, I have a concern with. Other than that, I know people that have left Palbeet because they don't have childcare, and they've got young kids, and they don't, they don't wanna have to deal with having to go all the way to Redmond, or having to go to Primeville, or Bend, or whatever. They want their kids to be local to where they are in the beginning and end of their day. So I do understand that. I don't have any kids, but I've had, I've had, you know, and we have an aging neighborhood as well, who some of our neighbors are leaving and younger families are coming in. So we've, even in our neighborhood, we've seen, I don't know, we probably, I think when I moved there, we had one family that had, that had kids. And now we've probably got six or eight families in our neighborhood. So I do see that there is a positive side to it. Again, I think it's more about looking forward about how you're gonna solve some of the issues and create a safer environment all the way around versus compiling some of the issues that are already there. So that's really all I, that's really all I have.
My name is Hunter Newhart. I guess because this property, right, you're leasing out the ground, you're putting a building on there. What type of protections do we have? Let's say something happens in the lease during construction? Or what happens with the building, like halfway through construction? Is it gonna be standing there, does it, who's gonna come back in, take care of it, who's gonna finish it?
Well, it has to be finished, it'll be finished. Yeah, I don't think, there isn't really anything that could happen, I feel like. But I will always have insurance and I mean, the funding will be there to finish it. So as long as this gets approved, then it'll be full funding, it'll be a full-funded project. But yeah, I'll have business insurance and all the state requirements that they require me to have from the minute I start. So the contractor has insurance as well, so.
Matthew, my friend. Regarding that, so again, we've been working with the contractor on this. This is a state-funded project, and it would be, it's a grant. And so before we do anything, I mean, we're only at, we're in the first phase of this, out of two, before we can actually start construction. And so we've passed the first one, and so we are getting approval for the second. With that, we have to provide a number of cost estimates for that. And so we've been working with contractors, in particular, one, Sean Newberry, who's from Palbeet, who, we've aligned the, the cost of the project, we've worked back and forth with him, and we're well below what that amount is from what the state would fund us for. So the state, every year, provides funding for daycares out there and other municipal projects. This is obviously private, but we have to provide all those numbers to, to the state before we even, before we even get approved. Those things need to be in front of the state, they review those, they review our plans before we do anything on that. And we've got so much documentation that we have to provide to them that it really mitigates the risk on this. And again, the contractor is, you know, he's locked up with us the whole way. And, you know, we met, I don't know, three, four weeks ago, just to make sure that we were under that threshold and that we've got that buffer, you know, for escalation on there in case, you know, this thing switches out for another year and prices go up. So I think that we've hedged our bets fairly well on that, so. Does that, is that helpful?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, great. Any other questions regarding that?
Yours, did you? You look like you're thinking, so I'm just curious. Any other questions for Matt? Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah? Any comments or?
Thank you, Chair Warren, I believe we had some testimony that lent itself more to the transportation system plan. Is that something I address now or later?
I was gonna do it, after you finish, but now is just a good time, so for members of the public, that were speaking about traffic concerns, I want to thank you for coming out here and providing your comment. I want you guys to know the county is doing what it can, especially Community Development Department. We are currently at the final stages of what's called the Transportation Systems Plan. It's a twenty-year planning document, looks at the whole county. We have our final hearing next Wednesday at nine AM. The Order Commission will be hearing the final version we passed via ordinance. I encourage you all, please come out, provide your comment and share your concerns. You'll be happy to know that we did a survey. Eighty-eight percent of respondents identified Palbeet, Palbeet Highway and one-twenty-six as their primary concern. The solution, the preferred solution, it's number one on the entire list, is a single lane roundabout for that intersection. You'll also be pleased to know that one of the purposes of that transportation system plan is so we can establish the methodology and the baseline and the justification for system development charges. So in the future, when there's an applicant like this that may impact that intersection, they will have to pay a fee that can go towards the improvement of that. that can go towards the improvement of that intersection. Uh, also in that intersection in particular, um, there was a land use application and a developer that uh is, is on the hook to help pay for that intersection, even though it's an ODOT road. Um, at a certain point, that'll be triggered and they will have to then fund uh the improvement for that intersection. And so, um, it will be coming soon. Not, I don't know how soon. I'm gonna do everything I can in my role as, you know, director to make sure that gets built uh as soon as possible. Cause I know it's a great, great thing for the community. Uh, as far as your safety concerns, the county, our department is also undergoing what's called the Transportation Safety Action Plan, which is another planning document that looks at uh traffic fatalities and injuries and tries to come up with ways at all these um important intersections that are dangerous and tries to find a way to make them safer. Uh, we're doing what we can on our side. Our, our job is definitely bolstered by the support of the community and especially public comment. And so as we go through these, um, I can't stress more how important and helpful it is for you guys to come out and have your concerns heard uh by the commissioners, by the planning commission here. So they know they have to support the community and what they're gonna do. So um, a lot of this goes beyond this particular application. You know, it's not their fault that intersection is so busy. Uh, I drive it every single day down and back. I used to drop my kids off at Palbeut, um, at the school there and then also a daycare nearby on my way into community here, uh, into town. And so I, I understand the needs, I understand the situation. Um, I hear you loud and clear and ask, we should know we're doing everything we can on our end. So uh, thank you for coming and please, I hope to see you next Wednesday at nine AM. Same room.
Thank you, John. So commissioners, I wanted to um follow that a little bit and draw you um, draw you back to the applicable criteria. Okay? The traffic impact again is going to be looked at for basically right, free road. Okay? So we know that Highway one twenty-six, that's identified on the transportation system plan, that's, that's really outside of the scope for consideration with the proposed use. What the proposed use is looking at is much more local. So I wanna draw you back to the criteria. It is a conditional use. It is allowed conditionally through the state of Oregon. The uh conditional use criteria includes a farm impact test. Uh, does it align with the goals and the comprehensive plan and of the county zoning ordinances? Does it, um, is there an increase? Is there a significant increase or impact to the agricultural farming operations in the area? There are areas in eighteen one sixty of the conditional use that do offer the planning commission to have more specificity in the site plan and the proposal. What um generally happens with conditional uses is they get the use approved on a tentative plan, right? We have a tentative site plan that's gonna, that shows that it meets the minimum site setbacks. Then at prior to the submission of building plans, there is a site plan review based on that conditional use approval. So staff will review those conditions of approval. If it is approved, check them off, have they been met, go through all the site plan specific criteria to make sure that it aligns with the conditional use that was approved or not approved. Well, that was approved because we're not gonna look at it, it's not approved. The transportation impact analysis was triggered due to the uh distance. So it didn't trigger on trips. It didn't trigger on other aspects. The reason for the transportation impact analysis was because of the distance with um, the existing driveways. The five hundred and five hundred, um, three fifty instead of the five hundred. Uh, in the road superintendent's comments in exhibit two, I believe, um, if there were things that were going to be done, it would, it would be again outside of this proposal responsibility, right? Um, I do believe that the bridge that was brought up earlier is on the list to be replaced with additional safety um mechanisms in the near future. Um, but again, outside of the scope of this project. So I wanna bring you back to the applicable criteria for this conditional use. And then if you wanna go forward again, go to Katie.
Katie, was that triggered the hundred, the five hundred feet because it's the fire department?
No, that's the
It's just driveway to driveway.
Standards.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Um, the fire department, so the fire comments did come in, they're attached, they came in timely manner, they are attached. They will be reviewed at site plan review as well. So when they, so if the use is approved, it'll go through the site plan. The site plan will then be reviewed by the planning department with the conditions of approval along with the fire and rescue district approving that. It'll also go through another fire life, health, safety with the actual building, like it's middle. So, um, there are a couple of, um, through deliberations, I would like to, um, there are a couple of proposed conditions of approval that have been semi-suggested that the planning commission can consider. One of them is that when the, um, that a copy of the state license, as this is a conditional use that's approved, as long as it's licensed through the Department of Education, that a copy of that state license um is required prior to submitting of the site plan review and that if the occupancy is more than fifty-five children, then the applicant should request modification to this proposal. Could be, um, could be one of the um conditions of approval that the uh, planning commission considers. Another one is that if there is a substantial change, which substantial is not defined, right? So let's try for clear and objective. So if there is a percentage of change from the site plan that gets submitted, or if there's a twenty percent change, fifteen percent change in the uh, structure, um, that it requires a modification through the planning commission. Those are things that are more substantial. Uh, if the commission wants to set those hours, hours of operation, those can also be done through conditions of approval. So through your deliberations, these are things that you um can consider. Remember, any condition of approval has to be tied to a criteria, right? So if we have a condition of approval, we need to be able to tie it back to chart. Sorry. Oh, wait, no worries. Um. So at this point, there's three options before the planning commission. Do you have all the information you need to make a decision?
I have a question first.
Oh, yes.
Um, which, I mean, I, I think we could talk about this through deliberation, but i- anything, anytime something is in farm use, it's not in the conditions, but isn't that uh usually put in there that they can't, you, I forgot, it's crazy, hold it.
Oh, a non-remonstrance?
Yes.
Yeah, that is um proposed condition of approval number four, that is already in the staff report.
I'm, I'm looking right at it, I missed it, sorry.
That's okay. I got that, I got that one in there.
Okay, okay.
Um, so that's a, yeah, the non-remonstrance is proposed condition four.
The other question I had is you were talking about something with a state license.
Great point. So the, I haven't, I haven't pulled up here so that I'd be able to read it. So under under two fifteen, two eighty-three, sub-two, which allows for conditional uses sub DD, childcare facilities, preschool recorded programs or school age recorded programs can be authorized if they are authorized under ORS three two nine A two five zero to three two nine A four five zero. So that is the Oregon licensure for childcare facilities. So they will have to show that they are licensed through that as a condition of approval.
When?
Um.
Show that. You, you, I think you said it, but I
Please.
State site plan adoption. Right? A review.
Well, that's, that's why I was wondering if
Isn't that what she said?
I, I guess my question is, can they even do that prior, that early ahead?
Can I say something on that?
Um, actually, we'd have to open it back up. Um, so there's a, there's a couple different spots that we can put that in, right? You can do it with submission of the site plan. You can do it with submission of building permits. You can do it prior to certificate of occupancy. Which certificate of occupancy would be the final step. Which would be signed off by, that is in here. Um.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I think it would be uh prior to occupancy permit because they can't, state can't come in and license something until it's actually done so that it's functional.
So that could be, so right now, um, condition, the proposed condition of approval number five, the development shall require an occupancy permit issued and signed by a planning director and building official prior to the beginning of operations. That could, you could put that there as well.
Then add the state license.
Mm-hmm. So that would be an option. So as you're going, if you're gonna move through deliberations, those are some of the things um that I had identified for discussion.
Okay. I cut you off. Give us, I mean, it's right here in our script if you wanna talk about their options.
So options are, do you have all the information that you need to make a decision? Yes or no? And if you do, does the applicant waive their seven-day final argument? So then you have to review the criteria, make findings on certain criteria that the applicant has met their burden of proof from the evidence, materials and testimony, or that they have not. And if they, if we find they have not, we also need to item, identify the specific criteria that they do not meet. Go ahead and, and go one more. And just, these are just, the underlying one is not in the staff report now. It just gives you a quick glance at the conditions of approval. So you, um, not necessarily, the proposed conditions of approval not necessarily um have to flip back and forth. If you'd rather have the other one where I had kind of those um, where the planning commission need to make those findings to determine, kind of go through criteria, um, we can have those back up too. And
The, uh, okay, the state license from the Department of Education required prior to submitting the site plan review or the occupancy permit?
Well, that's what she was saying. They just wrote, I think Katie just did this as an
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right. I wasn't paying attention, I was reading something else.
When we deliberate, we can specify it.
The slides seven and eight show the, um, where the planning commission need to make those findings. We're gonna throw those up there. That one back, uh, former, that one.
I, well, I think what we
Mm-hmm.
probably should do is explain to the applicant and you guys should do it because you're better at it than I, the seven, seven, seven. If or would that
So, so, so does, so the first question is, does the, uh, does the planning commission have the information they need to make a determination tonight? Or do you need more information?
No, I got it. Yeah, I've got enough information.
I think we do. Good to go.
Agreed.
Okay. So with that, the applicant can savor and always have an opportunity for final argument. And there's a seven-day final argument. If you would like to waive that, planning commission can start uh deliberations tonight, move forward through a decision. If you would like to retain your seven-day final argument, you would have seven days to provide an argument and we would come back to a continued hearing at a date I'm certain.
What, what waives that?
The applicant has uh said they will waive their seven-day argument.
Okay. So right now then, um, I would entertain a motion to start deliberations.
Let's say that.
Well, we, we, if, hold on, it would have to be a motion to, uh, uh, you to approve or deny. And then if it's approved, we would go into deliberations.
Do we need to close the public hearing first or did we already do that?
No.
Mr. Chair, have a motion.
Okay.
I move that we close the hearing and that we approve the application two one seven, two five zero zero, zero one five one PLNG.
One second.
With, with the conditions identified in the staff report.
Okay, and then we have a second?
Second.
Okay, now, any further discussion? So I think now we need to dial in. So Katie has got it down, hopefully one, not only for the conditions in the staff report, but some of the others that we were talking about. But I think the first one, just because Liquid brought it up, is, is getting that timeframe dialed in for the certificate.
What licensing prior to the certificate of occupancy?
Yeah.
But I think how you had it
Yes.
wrote there was fine, just
Actually, it wasn't. It didn't talk about occupancy, it talked about something else.
Right, right. But if you, if you just switch that around, uh
So that's gonna be numero, no?
That'd be part of number five.
Or, or
I think it would be its own. I think it would be number seven, like Katie had it.
I got it, number seven.
Unless you wanna incorporate it in number five, but, but do you want it as a separate condition? They're supposed to be separate.
Yeah, it should be separate. Okay. So one is the site plan review and approval shall be submitted prior to submission of building permits. All permits and approvals shall be required from the building and on-site departments is two. Three is our lighting will be reviewed at the time of site plan application. Four is the applicant shall sign, record and provide at the planning department with a copy of a non-remonstrance prior to submission of the site plan or building review. Five, the development shall require an occupancy permit signed by the issued and signed by the planning director, building official prior to the beginning of operations. Six, a county road approach application will be reviewed and approved through the application process with the county roads department. Um, six and a half, fire code compliant site plan with access to water with access and water supply to be indicated on the site plan. Somehow, put that in. And seven, uh, the state license prior to occupancy, um, any change
Fifteen percent?
Of fifteen percent will require, but uh what do we call it? Plan, commission approval or?
Modification.
Modification of the, of the conditional use.
Okay, a modification. Um, and this will include the hour, oh, somewhere along here, it's gonna include the hours of operations and the fact that there will be fifty-five or less children.
You want that all in number eight?
Okay.
I think the percentage in the, in the number kinda have to go
Yeah, I think they have to go together with it, yeah.
Okay, and the hours of operation. Is that gonna be on number eight?
Well, let's see where Katie's at here.
Uh, so it, what I have so far is that you would like the reference to the Kirk County Fire and Rescue Site Plan Requirements to be met through the conditions of approval.
Yes, as far as access for emergency equipment and water supply.
So those would, those are.
Those are already in.
Those are generally included, that'll be required at time of site plan through a separate. But what we can do is add let me think about that one for a minute. Licensing prior to certificate of occupancy, provide the state licensing. Um, any change of the structure by fifteen percent, was it structure or site plan?
I think it was structure.
Okay, structure by fifteen percent. Or.
Maybe an increase of occupancy.
An increase of occupancy?
Yeah.
Okay, would require a modification of the conditional use. It would require them to come before the planning commission, um, or an increase in occupancy. I think the structure is gonna have an occupancy.
Take cares are usually driven by.
Right, but that's not necessarily, right, so I don't think occupancy is the right word, but I, I know, I know where you're going with it. Increase of fifty-five enrolled or something to that.
Yeah, cuz technically the building.
The building could hold higher. And then I, and then nine, uh, yeah, this room's supposed to hold a hundred. And then nine would be the hours, hours of um operation. Um, which um is where I'm at right now. However, I would like to draw your attention back to, there are still questions in the staff report where the planning commission will need to either agree with the finding or make a finding that it is there, so that's where these kind of are too. So in addition to the conditions of approval, we'll have to I'm still trying to figure out, where would we put the Kirk County Fire and Rescue access to water in the staff report, if we're gonna put that in the condition of approval, where does it live in the criteria? Cuz again, if it's gonna be a condition.
But isn't, isn't that something already that Russ could?
Right, that is included in the comments, so it's, it's in the record, but it's not in the staff report for the fire review of a site plan, because this is the use.
So you can just reference Russ's comments.
Which is in the, in the. But I don't have, let me look real quick to see if we have a criteria, because if it's a condition of approval, it has to be in the criteria. So you, so the first, one of the first things that the, the planning commission did, did the applicant based on the material in the record, has the applicant met their uh farm impact test.
Is that need to be part of the approval?
That needs to be addressed, right? So the proposed finding
Was.
Based on what I read.
The proposed.
So that's the discussion to have.
Yeah, but based on the, what they gave us in the impact report.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I read through that, and it seems like everything meets requirements.
Is that what you're talking about, Katie, is, yeah?
Yes.
I agree.
Yeah.
You can't put the words in your mouth.
It is but the proposed use will be compatible with uses already allowed in the area. Will have minimal adverse impact on the livability or appropriate development of the budding properties or the surrounding area. Um, it is consistent with the goals and policies of the comp plan. And because of the need, I forget what the root for here. Because for a childcare desert, is that what I've noted to?
Which one you?
All of the, but.
The bottom one?
That's where I am. Yeah, this is what I was trying to read. The proposed childcare facility will not force a significant change in accepted farm or, or, and forest uses will not increase the costs of accepted farm or forest practices on nearby land devoted to farm use. Therefore.
Therefore, I would say on A, I agree with that.
And I disagree. I feel like Palbeet's already so strained for farmers that, guys, this is what we slope. If we start allowing stuff like this, it's gonna be continuously. And it's gonna be over and over and over again, these people in Palbeet, they can't even farm no more. And that's what Palbeet is, it's a farming and ranching community, it's not destination community. And the people that I represent, they want a solution to a big problem that was created by all the traffic. I'm totally against this.
That was, was that, was that my motion that we're discussing?
I believe we were talking about how it wasn't gonna impact the farming, is that right? And I said, yes, it's gonna big time, and it's already impacting the farm. I've talked to farmers, that they drive their tractor from one field to the other, they may be there for several hours, they can't farm no more. If we add more and more and more, and we keep approving things, making more traffic with that, and in result to this, what are we gonna turn into, Portland? If that's where all you, you guys all came from, that's not what we want here in Kirk County.
Any other thoughts?
I mean, the script was, it was, this is never irrigated at any point, this property here, or was it at one point?
It was not.
It was never irrigated.
Are you sure of that?
Well, it's been taken out of.
Yeah, exactly.
Taken out of properties.
Long time ago.
A long time ago, yeah.
That's why it was included in the, uh, that particular Palbeet zone. What is it called? Yeah, few three.
Okay, I, I might just agree with you, I, I do believe, you know, we gotta protect the farm grounds.
I mean, what happens, like the man said, when they go pull out to the left there and some little girl dies leaving that daycare center? Is it on us for proving it? Without getting a solution to taking a left to go backwards bend? These are things that I'm looking towards the future, that's what a planning commission is to me, it's the future. And we have to be thinking about the traffic in Palbeet, and if we allow more stuff with the traffic that's going on, I think it's absurd.
It's, it's a, it's a tough road, because you, you can't deny people to use their property the way, if they fit, if they fit in the criteria. And that's, that's where it is tough, it is tough to try to.
And the, the rose is what we worked on, that transportation plan, trying to correct these issues. This is just kind of coincidence, kind of in the same area of a, a primary zone that we thought was an issue.
Oh, and, Perk, I get what you're saying, but the whole traffic issue is not one of the criteria that we're basing our decision on.
I, I agree, but what I said is, when you're trying to drive your tractor and you add more to trying to get one field to the other, it sure don't help out the farmers, and that's what Palbeet, guys, Palbeet is a farming and ranching community, look at the sign and you go into it. Look at all the farm fields that are around there, those guys are, it's dire straits trying to farm in that country right now.
But, I guess, but were water rights pulled from this property, would they be able to get water rights back? I don't know if that's, it's not really the criteria we're looking at, but I don't know if it's could, I would love to see more farm ground and not get water rights taken away. And not see land being lost. But at this point, I don't think they'd ever get water rights back, this would be more grazing. It wouldn't be really much of a farm use anymore.
There's also a hundred and eight acres or a hundred and nine acres that surround that property that is owned by the county that I believe was initially set aside to expand for schools and other things. And so, you know.
I, I just, guys, I feel like if you, I mean are, I don't know, I just don't like, once we get started doing this for one person, we gotta do it for everybody, because we did it to start out with and.
Not if they don't meet the criteria though.
Very true, yeah.
So that's in the work sessions, we're.
Commissioner, I just remind you, we're sticking to the standards and criteria for this particular application. Um, I'll also, I guess, add that one of the additions that the board commissioners requested and that has been added to the transportation system plan up for uh discussion next week is consideration for farming and ranching vehicles through all this, and whatever we can do uh to make their jobs not quite as difficult as it is right now, so that your comments heard uh in the, if possible, we can.
It's very dangerous, people are coming up on them farmer vehicles, they don't understand they're doing ten miles an hour, and when you're doing sixty-five, they're just trying to get from one piece of property to the other, it's dangerous, and a lot of those farm fields guys are right on this twenty-six.
Okay, any other thoughts? They can, question for you though, Katie, it was brought up possibly, which maybe that's a requirement from the state, I don't know, the school zone signs, the I, I don't know, I don't know how all that works, I don't know if that's up to.
Do we have to make a requirement?
Yeah, is that even our jurisdiction?
We made an event place out there on Palbeet Highway, put up event ahead signs when they.
Yeah, the temporary ones, but I didn't know about something, I don't, I don't know, it's just a question, or is that a state mandated thing that they're gonna make them do? If they're putting something like.
Well, it's county roads, so we're on the county road, so it could be potentially, if the planning commission wanted to address that, it, we could do a, a condition of approval, we'd have to find a criteria. But I think, I think we have one in there where they can work with the county roadmaster to identify um, safety signage um for that area. And we're, and potentially even work with the Kirk County Fire and Rescue District as well, since the fire station's right there too.
Or appropriate speed.
For appropriate speed and signage.
Signing, appropriate speed and signage.
Um.
I think, right.
On another note, I do believe I found a criteria for the Kirk County Fire and Rescue Districts. Under um, sub D, the proposed use is appropriate considering the adequacy of public facility and services existing or planned for the area affected by that use water. Um, so I think we could add that along with.
As a condition?
We could add it as a condition, but then add it to the finding.
Okay.
Because again, if it's in the conditions, it needs to be in the findings.
Okay, yeah, right.
Under, so um Kirk County Fire and Rescue District site, it's gonna be a site plan review um for public um appropriate public facilities. So making sure that they have access for that, and then requiring that review. And then.
If it's in the criteria. Yeah.
Um. The assets question, so is there evidence in the record to identify assets of a particular interest in the county with relation to this proposed use? And the proposal is another question that is in the staff report for the planning commission to deliberate over. Um, while I review the section, so you feel free to discuss, and then I will find the section for the signage.
The need for childcare.
Katie, that's a statewide, Perk, um, is there anywhere in Palbeet that is zoned for childcare?
So exclusive farm use, you can operate in home childcare, believe. Um, you can, you do have home occupation, um, opportunity that isn't allowed. It's a conditional use, just like this, right? They have to meet the conditions. Uh, there is a rural service center that is the school, the church, the um store and the kiosk, I believe, the little coffee stand. That's the rural service center. There are provisions that you, um, the daycare facility and an in-home daycare facility can be allowed in certain residential areas, depending on the nature of the business and the use. And it's all proposal and site specific. So it's not like you can go here outright allowed, no problem, because there isn't any like that when you're talking about um, this type of a use, right? So it's just like any other conditional use, a commercial in conjunction with farm use is a conditional use. Each proposal needs to be able to, the applicant needs to show how they meet the criteria.
Is that the same in Primeville too? I mean, there's no childcare specific. I'm trying to, trying to.
There, there is a lady down on one twenty-six that has childcare right uh just east of the store on that side of the highway. And it's a terrible location, and it made a big impact, uh, traffic coming and going out of there.
Was she approved?
It's not a, it, she was approved, there, there's not a like, there's not a like for like for, for your question. Right, it, it, state of Oregon says, you have this property, it's zoned this way. Kirk County says, we agree with the state, and we're gonna allow people to use their property to their rights that they have, the ability to use them for, if they can show that they can meet the criteria. So if you own a piece of property and you wanna do something on it that the state and the, in Kirk County has said you can, if you meet these conditions, then that's the process that we allow to anyone who ha, who owns property. There's not a specific zone that's gonna say, that's not gonna have s- standards, subject to standards at a minimum. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, I just was trying to relate to like, you know, when you do heavy construction, you're zoned in industrial. And when you're, you do commercial, it's commercial. I just was kinda trying to feel out if Kirk County had a specific, what would that fall under for zoning?
It, it doesn't.
It does, yeah.
Okay, so it has to be put to us like that, this right here, every time.
Dependent on the proposal. This particular proposal rose to a level and is identified through the state and the county to go through this process so that we have active public engagement. We're reviewing all the criteria, the applicant has provided materials and evidence so that you have a public place to work through the application and to, and determine if the applicant has met their burden of proof, or if they have not met their burden of proof. Other applications that may, that would be different usage, different intent, different numbers, different building size, may or may not go through that same process.
So what were you gonna look for? The signage?
Yes.
Okay, and we just need to determine.
Right.
Which I, I mean, I think the needs there, but.
I think it is as well. I think, you know, in Kirk, just as a, like, if it was a raised food place that was closing down, somebody wanted to take over that and turn into a char, childcare facility, I think it's a totally different situation. But you're in an, you're in an urban environment instead of a rural environment. And so, I, 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 I do understand what you're, you know, where you're coming from, I mean, I see it, I live there.
Yeah, I, 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 I just, the reason I was asking those questions is because if somebody buys a piece of property that they think, well, maybe I'm gonna. Yeah, I, 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 I just, the reason I was asking those questions is because if somebody buys a piece of property that they think, well, maybe I'm gonna buy this because it's zoned for this. But then we allow to do conditional use permits. Doesn't that de- deflate the person that tried to do it by buying a current zoned piece of property?
So I, I'll just respond to Commissioner, do you have any? So I don't, I was looking through it. We don't have, there's, there's not any of our zones in the county that are outright have childcare facilities um as an approved use, so. Within city limits, I'm sure things are different, but. There's nowhere where our zoning um encourages them to locate.
You got the schools, right? Like, schools don't necessarily.
Schools are outright in some of the zones.
Okay.
Schools are.
This is a school zone property. Or does that fall under a E F U three or something?
Yeah, if you, it has to co-locate with the school or community center.
Right.
Um, but otherwise, there's no outright allowed childcare facility zones.
So in this particular example, this is probably only a place they could do it in Palbeet with co- co.
I don't know, another community.
Coexisting, is that what you said?
Co- co- locate.
Co- locate.
Co- locate.
A new word.
Uh, transmission line stuff, co-locate is, is a big term, so uh.
Okay.
So I think under the general conditions, under um eighteen one sixty sub seven gives us the opportunity uh limiting or otherwise does. Designating the number, size, location, height and lighting of signs. It doesn't say what type of signs. Um, so we can add right there that um they. The applicant shall work with the county roadmaster to determine if there are additional safety or road signs that could be in place to um. Reduce speed or increase awareness of. Uh, area.
I, I think they just have to file an application or something like a road authority.
It'll, it'll just, they'll need to work with the road to do that. Um.
And then what are the requirements for the approach? Because they have the approach.
The, the approach is gonna go through, so we have a road approach permit application process. And the roadmap, the road superintendent will work with the applicant on what the, on what that requirement would, will be for that use.
Okay, and so uh we're coming out with this is to help with that queuing of cars.
So the parking lot standards and site plan will, would be the parking lot standards and the queuing and the road standards and all that will be a part of the um site plan review process.
Okay. Alright.
That. Yeah. But the road approach is a separate process. I'll deal with that.
Okay, and you asked about uh. The, the need or the.
Yes.
Okay, so.
The asset of particular interest to the county, so the, from what I heard is um. The identification of the childcare desert and the need being included in that list. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
Kirk County is among the lowest. In Oregon. When it comes to. Having a place to take your kids. From the. Oregon State University's College of Public Health in twenty twenty-two, only fourteen percent of children aged zero to five had access to regulated healthcare slots in Kirk County.
My wife stays home with my kids.
Lucky her.
I just wanna, I need to correct the record, so in our light commercial zone, it does allow a day nursery, assuming that's in childcare facility. But like that means all spoken for.
Well, how many do you have, Katie? How many?
Okay, so uh what I have for conditions of approval are. Uh, site plan review and approval shall be submitted prior to submission of building permits. All permits and approvals shall be acquired from the building and onsite divisions. All lighting will be reviewed at the time of site plan application. The applicant shall sign, record and provide the planning department with a copy of an honor of monstrance prior to submission of a site plan or um. And we'll just do of a site plan review. Um, development shall require an occupants permit issued and signed by the planning director and building official prior to the beginning of operations. The road approach application will be reviewed and approved through the, through the process with the county roads department. Licensing. Um, the state license um will be provided prior to the certificate of occupancy. Kirk County Fire and Rescue Department site plan um requirements including access and water shall, shall be reviewed. Um, at the time of site plan. Review. Any change of the structure by fifteen percent or increase. Uh, fifty-five enrolled. Will require a uh modification. Of the conditional use. I have an hour of operations that was not finished. And in number ten, the applicant will work with the Kirk County Road Department to determine. Um, signage and speeds for re-fer.
The hours of operation will be ten and this sign thing will be eleven now. Because we.
Yes, you're right, because I have six and a half. I totally know, I know, you got me. Alright, seven. Eight, nine, ten.
Do we need to add in this, the hours of operation exactly at this point in time, six A M to nine P M, Monday through Friday?
It would be helpful for clarification.
Can I add that?
If that's what you all.
Is that agreeable?
Alright, yeah.
Six to nine, Monday through Friday?
Six A M to nine P M, Monday through Friday. Okay.
That's what I have.
Okay, so um, there, oh, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna make a suggestion. I'm not gonna, I didn't try to memorize all that stuff. I have a motion on the floor.
Yeah.
And I'm not gonna try to repeat everything. Katie just lifted off. So my suggestion is that I could withdraw my motion.
Well, hold on before you do that.
Well, it, we'll just finish.
Okay.
And, and then I can make another motion that we um. Continue the hearing to a date and time certain for deliberation only that would give staff time to clean up all these conditions.
Do we need to do that?
Well, typically, we haven't had Katie read all the conditions into the record. It's supposed to be the person making the motion, right?
Your motion was to close and approve the permit conditions. Uh, based on the conditions identified in the staff report and in discussion.
I suppose that would work.
You're saying the changes, right, George? We'll deliberate on the changes and we can make a proper motion?
Well, I'm just wondering procedurally.
So procedurally, um, from my two cents, I, I think you'd be okay with the motion worded such as uh the conditions of approval as uh articulated by staff. Um, or you want it to, that sometimes the wording needs to be precise on some of these, and so that might be worth deliberating. Um, if you wanted to come back and talk about the specific wording of some of these conditions, but. If you're okay generally with wording, then she would bring back the final decision, um, and then that would be signed. Um, if you guys were okay with how things were at the end. Okay, but the motion does not need to include each specific condition and the precise wording. It just needs to be a reference to what we discussed here in the deliberations.
But I had, I did have a question on uh something that Kirk brought up about. Monitoring traffic or is there, have we done that before in the past with any kind of? Not knowing what the impact's gonna be. I, I don't, I don't know. I, it's just. Have, hey, have we? I don't remember we have, but.
The only one that I can think of is the agritourism at Curly Ranch.
Well, yeah, aggregate, I remember that, but not.
Agritourism. Was the, is the one, only one that, that I can recall having a condition of approval. To report back to the planning commission yearly of what those numbers were, however. That has not happened. There, they, they have not um. Continued with that approval at this time.
We do have annual reports for all types of things, though. Um, and so.
It was just a question because it was brought up, but I wanna know what you guys think about it, or if you think it's necessary, or.
If you did go down that path, I would not recommend the report comes to, to me as a, as a planning director instead of the planning commission.
What's that?
If you do uh ask for a report like that, I suggest it has to be submitted to uh me as the planning director instead of the planning commission.
Oh, yeah. This is Martha. I think that with the uh reduced speed limit that we're. At least insinuating that will happen, that it's going to change the type of traffic that will be on that road. If we have a reduced speed uh childcare ahead. That is a si- it's signage, it's enforceable. Um, I don't think that the same people will be using it as a cutoff. I, I think it could have the potential to change the traffic flow and the type of traffic on that road.
I agree. That makes sense.
And so Kirk, and so, I don't know. What about the, isn't there a subdivision that has like three or four, three, three or four hundred people that live right down the road to the left from there? And so if we slow it down. I mean. I, I just don't, I don't, I remember from what I'm saying, I don't know.
Okay, so back to your point, George. Do you wanna read through them one more time? And if we're good with them or hurt with?
So I need to, I need to restate the motion, right? Before we do vote on it.
Yes, so your motion now states that the motion on the floor is to approve it with the conditions from the staff.
Then I would refer to you reading what you have in front of you for the record as additional conditions of approval.
Do we need just amend his motion?
Uh huh.
Okay.
A major motion.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend my motion. I move that we approve. Uh, application two one seven two five zero zero one five one, P L N G, with the conditions of approval. Within the, the staff report and with the conditions of approval, the additional conditions of approval that we have discussed. And that Katie has recorded. And that will be added to a revised staff report.
I'll second that again, but you left out the part we're closing the hearing.
No, I did that. Oh, can close here.
Close the hearing, okay.
I'll say. Can you second? Okay, any other discussion? Okay, so I'll call for the vote, Kirk.
Alright. Name.
Your.
I. Hello?
I.
Hunter?
Alright.
Rita?
I.
Martin?
Bye.
Okay.
We'll bring the, we'll bring the decision back at the next um regular planning commission, which will be the twenty-second. Correct? October twenty-second, we'll have the final decision. Um, and at that point, you would review it, make sure that it is. Um. You didn't, not necessarily review it, you're just gonna look at it, does it say what we wanted it to say, mic signs? And there's that. Okay. Um. Yeah.
Okay. Five, alright, we'll take five. You want ten? Recording. Okay. We're gonna get going. So now move on to the next item on the agenda, public hearing for record number two one seven two five zero 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 two five zero, P L N G. Bishara revocable trust. Edward Bishara owner, opposed to amend Kirk County zoning map to change the zoning tax law sixteen fourteen one one. Zero 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 one two zero zero from exclusive farm use zone, E F U three Palbeet area to rural residential ten R ten. The situs address is to be determined, southwest Drive Road, Palbeet. Property is located approximately three miles south of Highway one twenty-six in Palbeet. Applic- applicable criteria, the hearing will be held pursuant to Kirk County Code eighteen point one seven two administrative provisions. Funding commission will be evaluating the request against the following applicable criteria, Kirk County Code Title eighteen, chapters twelve, sixteen and ninety-two. Kirk County Comprehensive Plan, Kirk County Ordinances one two seven, Amendment one, Oregon Administrative Rules, Oregon Revised Statutes. Expartee contact of interest or bias, do any of the commission members have conflict of interest or bias to disclose?
Nope.
Nope, no.
No.
Nope.
Okay. Has any member of the public commission had any ex parte contact with the applicant or any member of the public regarding this matter? Commissioners should disclose if they have visited the site. It uh state the record of the observations and impressions from the site, but we have not had a site visit. Any ex parte contact with the applicant?
No.
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 Are there members of the public or in person or participating right remotely who wish to challenge any member of the commission and participating online, please use the chat feature to request to speak. Okay, hearing, we've seen none. Order proceeding, proceedings before opening for testimony either in person or for those participating remotely. Want to remind everyone, all testimony will be directed toward the applicable cr- approval criteria and standards. No person may testify without first receiving recognition from the hearing authority in stating their full name and address. No person may represent irrelevant, immaterial or unduly repetitious testimony or evidence. Please do not repeat testimony. Commission may set time limits on all testimony. Any commission member want to set time limits? I don't think we want to. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence with enough detail to give the hearing authority and parties the opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval without detailed specificity to allow the hearing authority to respond to the issue precludes the applicant from seeking action for damages in circuit court. At the conclusion of the hearing pursuant to Kirk County Code eighteen one seven two zero eight one, the planning commission may consider any request to continue the hearing or leave the written record open. We will start with hearing the staff report. After that, testimony from any federal, state or local agencies will be allowed. We will then offer opportunity for the applicant to speak. Individuals in support of the proposal will be heard, then those in neutral of the proposal, next individuals opposed to the proposal will be heard. The applicant can have, offer the final rebuttal. We will now proceed with the staff's presentation. Take it away.
Hello, Planning Commission, Katie McDonald, Kirk County Timmy Planner. We're here tonight to review the Zone Wrap Amendment. Application for the Char revocable trust. This property was included. Um. Applicant seeks a zone map amendment to add twenty acres from E F U three to R ten. The property is um just south of the previous zone map amendment that we did. Uh, it was included in the Palbeet study as being a revocably committed.
It was included in the Palbeet study as being irrevocably committed and included in ordinance one two seven amendment one. Legal description J. No further development is being applied for this time. This is simply a zone amendment. Applicable criteria. Where the irrevocable, seven ones, irrevocably committed. Was, is recorded in the comp plan. And through Cook County Ordinance one two seven amendment one, Cook County Code. It's the establishment of a zone boundaries, rural residential, we're going through the quasi judicial amendment administrative provisions. And noticing requirements, the noticing to. DLC date was done thirty-five days prior. They've had ample opportunities to comment. We have received no comments. Regarding this proposed zone change. And I'm good next. This map shows two dash four section, which is the light yellow and the kind of greenish in the center. The red dot is the Bishara property. The darker greenish section there is legal description J, which is included. In two dash four in ordinance one two seven. Next steps for this. The zone change is that it would, the decision would go. From the planning commission to the Board of County Commissioners as a, with an ordinance. And then there would be two hearings at the Board of County Commissioner level. For. The ordinance to then be recorded and the zone not to be changed, so. This is our third zone change. There, there's not many properties left out there to, that have the ability. For this, that had to have been identified in the Palbeet study. They had to have gone through the amendment process. They had to have come in on their own. They've already met the exception. Peace. Now it is simply the zone change. Map change. Two different processes. One already done. The zone change mapping is the only difference. Yes.
Quick question. So in the applicant's materials, in two locations, there's an exhibit B. That shows a map of a parcel on Mill Creek. It's for the septic approval.
That should have been taken out. The wrong one got. So I, thank you for bringing that to our attention. The applicant actually came in and took those. Revised their application, but it sounds like the wrong application got uploaded.
Okay.
So.
It looks like, I mean, everything else looks fine, it's just the map.
Yeah, there was just, there were two, yeah. Yes, and they're just. That was a staff error. We uploaded the wrong application.
That's the one I've been working on for Mr. Gold Patrick.
Is, but do you have it in the staff report? Do you have it in your information?
It's not in the staff.
No.
So this, this was just a mistake to have that in there?
Yes, and there's a, so we received the application with the exhibit B, like you're saying, right? And then the applicant came in, and I'm like, we have these extra things in the application, and they, and they came in and took those out. But it never got re-scanned, or the electronic file did not get updated. So the electronic file should be updated.
I guess my.
And not have that exhibit in there, and my staff report does not refer to the exhibit B in the application materials.
Okay, but I think just so we're clear, though, this is, septic approval is not even needed for that.
No, there's no development that is being proposed, and it's not. Septic would only be needed if it was a development proposal.
I just didn't want to talk about it on the record and then.
Yeah.
Have somebody else think, well, how can we be?
And it's ten miles away from this property.
Just, you know, logistics, right? So, yeah, we'll get that. Thank you for bringing that. I wasn't aware.
Okay, are you all?
That's it for me. If you have any questions, you know, we've, we've been through this process a few times now, and. Be glad to answer, point people in the direction of where things are, other than the septic.
Wasn't this brought up a month or two ago? We went through it, we had a bit of a discussion about.
It's a different, so the other, we had a zone change back in May for the Lester property, which is two to the south, I believe, or two to the north.
At that time, I thought we said this could all be a staff decision now, and you wouldn't, you would, no, I'm just kidding.
Nice try.
Okay, any other questions for Katie before we? Okay, and then we don't have any agencies with us. So at this time, we will have the applicant come up. Yeah, no rest of boot.
Hi, folks. Again, Craig Kilpatrick, my address is, is on record. So as Katie so aptly put it, this is a, this is kind of a procedural thing, commission's been through it. For those of you that are new to the commission, this has a history that goes back to the late nineties. There was a lawsuit that was brought, not a lawsuit, it was an appeal, it was brought before the county because there was a lot of activity happening in Palbeet. And that, that blew the decision, then ended up rolling into what was called the Palbeet settlement. All the parties that were involved, thousand friends, a lot of neighbors, whole bunch of folks were in, involved in coming up with that settlement. And what was determined was that there are going to be a number of properties in Palbeet. That are what we call irrevocably committed to uses other than farm use. So for anybody that has any concern about. This is one more area of farm use being, you know, whittled away. This, these properties that were involved met the criteria for not being farm properties. There are properties that were simply. Zoned as, as farm, as part of kind of broad brush approach that, that our forbearers took when land use first started. In Cook County and in the state. So this is not quite the last one. There's a few more of these little pieces out there. But one of the requirements of the settlement and, and, and as Katie mentioned, there was a series of ordinances that were already passed. It said, these are irrevocably committed, but it's going to be incumbent on the individual landowners. To bring forward the effort to do the map change. In other words, the county wasn't going to do their work for them. They're going to say you have to do it. So it's evolved over time. I did one of the largest groups of this, I don't know, ten years ago, I think. And, and now we're kind of getting down to the last of it. So we have this procedure, we bring this before you. If you have any questions or concerns, if you really have trouble sleeping, I would suggest reading the portion on, on the Palbeet. Settlement and all that, because it is kind of an interesting little bit of history, and it's very definitely. An anomaly that I don't think has happened in, 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 in any other area of state. So with that, are there any questions on this?
Those of you that are new, I want to, if you're not understanding, for sure, ask Craig questions. Craig, how long has the applicant owned this property for?
Not very long. It actually belonged to a woman by the name of Julius I'm, Juliette I'm, she owned it for almost thirty years. She finally passed away, her estate sold it to the present owner, and the present owner is now moving forward with it.
Any other questions for Craig?
Good, we're mercifully short.
Is the, is the owner online? Did he want to speak, anybody? Is there anybody online right now?
The.
If, if, if you're online and you'd like to speak in favor of this proposal. Put your request in the chat, and we will get to you.
Or speak, he should be in.
I'm in, in favor of this proposal.
Okay, is there anything you want to add, or just let us know you're in favor?
I'm definitely just in favor. Thank you so much.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone online that is neutral to their proposal that wants to speak? Do we have anybody else?
It's just staff.
Just staff? Okay. Anybody else in the room want to speak in opposition? Okay. We're hearing and seeing none. Would you like to rebuttal?
If anybody wants to see the pictures, they're there.
Okay. All right, so. Does anybody have any other additional questions?
Is this property, Craig, is it landlocked, or how, how did you get to it?
It is. Staff can answer that, or Craig can either way.
Sorry.
All right. Yeah, the, we want to show them the area? Yeah. It, it's adjacent to Rife Road. It's, it's, it's just sure, a little bit to the south of the cemetery, Palbeet Cemetery. And so it accesses onto that, that portion of Rife that's unimproved.
Do you have to go through other people's property to get to that?
And, and most of the properties, I think with the exception of one. The other properties that are all in there have road access. Some of them are a little com, complex. Because in order to get a larger group of people that were initially involved in this, they all had to band together. And do road, road improvements, share some easements, and kind of get everything squared away up there. So some of the properties that are further to the east, they're also. Up the hill further actually come down by another means. This one, let's write it up under right.
Okay, any other?
Just out of curiosity, do, when you partition that, and you make the transition to R, R ten. Do you put anything in there about easements to access? Because I'm assuming they're taking the long and cutting it in half, versus cutting it the long ways.
Chances are, what will happen there, Marty, is the property will obviously be divided into two ten acre parcels. How that happens is yet to be determined, but the logical thing to do would be to create two tens with an easement through. The westerly parcel to serve the easterly parcel.
Gotcha. Just curious.
Okay, any other? Questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so. Now we'll determine if the hearing should be closed or continued to a time date certain for either additional testimony, additional information. Mr. Chair, I move we close the hearing. Hold on.
Oh, sorry.
Need to ask the applicant, if he wants to wave his seven, seven, seven.
No way.
Okay. All right. I move that we close the public hearing. And that we recommend approval of rezoning approximately twenty acres. From, from exclusive farm use to rural residential ten to the Board of County Commissioners.
A second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, I will call for the vote. Kirk abstain. George?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. We did?
Hi.
Monty?
Hi.
Okay. There you have it, so.
So for this, I'm sorry. I should have had you move include in the motion to have Mike sign out of. Meeting.
Can we just do a separate quick motion?
Can you do that?
Okay. If somebody wants to.
Our motion that we authorize the chair to sign this. Outside of a, the next meeting.
Sign of the public hearing.
Outside of a public hearing.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Kirk? What are we voting for? To quit the meeting?
No, this would be for me to sign this outside of a public meeting.
Oh, yeah. Hey.
Hi.
Hi.
All right.
Hunter?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay.
Okay. So process wise, Mike will sign the decision. The decision will get attached to the ordinance. The ordinance will go for their Board of County Commissioners, October fifteenth. And for the first hearing for the ordinance.
And there's two, two hearings?
Only two before the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay. Glad you got to spend so much time with us, Craig.
My pleasure.
Thank you for your input earlier.
Can I ask a technical question? It's because I want to know, it's not come up before. So sometimes when we vote no, we say why we're voting no. But is there any rule that says, like, Kirk wanted to abstain, that's fine. But are we supposed to say why we're abstaining, or we can just do it, and that's all?
That's an excellent question, Commissioner Stack. I, I don't believe there's a requirement, there's a requirement as planning commission to hold, have their. Decision justified, right, defining the decision, but as far as no votes, abstention, I don't think you have to just. We're still.
We're still, we're still.
Yeah, so. Okay.
Okay, I'll take this since Katie's had to line share. I want to commend Mr. Kilpatrick, staff, and especially the planning commission for outlasting my laptop tonight. I'll go as quick as I can. So as far as in your calendar, what's upcoming on the twenty-second of this month, we have deliberations for the Moffett Solar. And the Air Strip on the twenty-ninth, we're going to have a special work session. Trying to improve our definition of a dwelling, a dwelling unit. On November twelfth, we have settle appeal. And a, our omnibus code update on December tenth, we're going to have more with the code update, and then our Armani Towers, which all. So Armani Towers. That was an administrative approval that I invoked my authorities' planning director to send to the planning commission, since it is in Palbeet. It's, it's got a lot of public interest, and so. It's going to be a newer guy's plate, it's part of your obligation of the planning commission. It's the main reason, so the chance the public can be heard on this approval, or on this application. We are, as discussed, we have the final, potentially the final TSP hearing next Wednesday. The Board of Commissioners, they made a few changes to what you guys recommended. One of them was to make sure there was reference to agricultural vehicles. And trying to improve their safety and accessibility. Another one was they, on Juniper Canyon, if you guys remember, we. Added in a second emergency access route. They are now adding in a third preferred solution, which is widening Juniper Canyon Road itself. So there's going to be three for Juniper Canyon on there. I think those are the only changes that they. And then they incorporate ODOT's comments, they added some, some comments as well.
John, just, just a question. When, when, when the discussion of widening Juniper Canyon, was that to put like another lane in one way or the other? Or just widen?
Just widen, widen shoulders, and so no, no additional lanes. I can't. I don't think there's a, turn lanes, I'm just widening the road, so it makes it easier access, and not, not the entire length, just from Davis Loop down to the intersection.
Excuse me, I missed all that. From Davis Loop to where?
To the, to the Juniper Canyon three eighty intersection.
Oh, okay. Why did it?
I am trying to find the time to finish a grant application to DLCD to update our gold five inventory. That's due on Friday. And I'm also in the process of drafting a letter to Dogami with some questions about. Knife Rivers operations at the, the Woodford site, so that's, that's on our plate. Anything else? Katie, you want to add?
Is Moffett deliberations only?
Correct.
Are you, are you tired? What is your problem?
I'll say I got offered flowers the other day because I looked so tired, I thought it might brighten my day.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Hey, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, folks.